It's six P M on October twenty third, two zero twenty three, and I'd like to call the City Council meeting to order. We'd like to invite Pastor Deborah Timmons from Asbury Church to come forward for the invocation.
Dear gracious and loving Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, oh God, for the many blessings that you continuously bestow upon us. Bless all the council members. Bless, I pray, oh God, the agenda. Bless this meeting. We pray, oh God, and we pray that you bless us individually and collectively. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go, Con, please. Mayor Finley.
Here.
Councilmember Robleski.
Here.
Councilmember Spears.
Here.
Councilmember Powell.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
Council President Bartlet.
Here.
Councilmember Denzine. Councilmember Seifert.
Here.
And we have Coram present. Next, we have reorganization of the council. And Lisa? You're up.
Good evening. Um, at this time, we're going to have reorganization of councils. And I would like to ask council, let's start with nominations, please. For president.
I'd nominate Renee.
Any other nominations? Okay, Renee, we're going to have you as president of the Madison City Council by acclamation. I'll turn it over to you, please.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, next, we need to have nominations for Pro Tem. Okay, we have one nomination, John Seifert. Anyone else? Seeing none, John Seifert is appointed Pro Tem by acclamation. Congratulations, Sean. I have one appointment to make this evening, and that is for our finance committee. Uh, we're going to begin with, uh, the appointment of the finance chair. And I'd like to appoint, uh, and nominate Connie Spears as our finance chair. Are there any other nominations? Connie Spears will be appointed by acclamation as the chair of the finance committee. In addition, I would like to appoint Teddy Powell and Greg Shaw to the finance committee. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, Greg and Teddy will be appointed along with Connie to the finance committee. Next, we'll move to amendments to the agenda. Is there any?
There are no amendments.
Congratulations. The agenda is approved as published. Next, approval of the minutes, number two zero twenty-three dash nineteen dash R G from October ninth, two zero twenty-three.
Move to approve in a second.
Motion in second, any discussion? Ready for a vote. Councilmember Shaw.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
Council President Bartlet.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
I have Stan.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine. And the minutes are approved. Next, we have presentations and awards and a presentation by the American Legion Post two two nine for the introduction of the two zero twenty-three Girls and Boys State attendees. Please come forward.
Good evening. So I'm Larry Benoy, the commander of Madison American Legion Post two two nine. And with me, I've got Jean Downs here. She's my vice commander and also president of the auxiliary. Um, tonight, we want to recognize, uh, some of the boys state and girls state attendees. If you recall in, um, in previous, previous presentations, um, they had the opportunity to go down, spend a week down, uh, this last year is Detroit State. Um, and they've done that for the last couple of years, um, where they get to replicate, uh, state and local government, their own positions. Um, they have, have committees, they, uh, pass amendments, uh, and a lot of other, uh, community, or I mean, uh, legislative related activities. And, uh, spend a week down there, get a good orientation of how state and local government works. And, uh, they're going to share, a couple of them might share just a minute or two of their personal experiences with that. So Mayor, if you'd come forward, if you would please, um, we're going to, uh, bring forward several of the attendees. And, uh, we'd like to get a picture with them and you, if you don't mind. Uh, first, first I have, uh, Finley Kozewski, or Kozewski. Kozewski, Finley Kozewski.
We're cousins.
Lyndy Kirby. Lyndy Kirby. Ashon Deal. Uh, Drew Croker. Crocker.
Crocker.
And, uh, Landon. Where? Okay, got a D in there. Okay, so, um, I won't make you walk to the mic and get on, but talk loudly. We're going to have each one introduce themselves, what positions they've held and what school they attended.
My name is Lyndy Kirby, and I go to James Coleman High School, and I was Andrew County Commissioner.
My name is Lyndy Kirby, I go to Ball Hill Press School, I ran for the party chair in the corner, and I was a lady commissioner. I was often governor of James Coleman Press School, and I ran for city chairman in high school, and I had to work in there for a while.
Uh, I'm Drew Crocker, I go to Ball Hill Press School, and I ran and got elected to be a state senator, and I ran for governor, didn't quite make it, uh, was a hard nominee for the national.
Uh, I'm Larry, I go to James Coleman Press School, I ran to, I ran for, and I was elected to be up, state house representative, and was later appointed to the board of parliament.
And Drew got an award.
Yes, I got the, uh, a citizenship award from Madison.
All right. Now, a couple of you that want to share a little bit about your experience, do you want to? You want to go first?
Drew, you want to step to the mic so we can catch you at home?
Absolutely. Well, hello, uh, I'm Drew Crocker. Uh, I'm one of the individuals who had the awesome opportunity to go to boys state over the summer. And we actually had an orientation for boys state a few weeks before we went. And they kind of told us a little bit about the, the whole boys state experience, kind of what to expect. And I have to admit, I was very overwhelmed. Uh, all of the information seemed like so much, we were going to be packed every day, they said we were going to have little time to sleep. I was, I was really worried about the whole experience. Uh, but we got there and it was just incredible. We started off with two days of kind of running for different positions. They told us all about how the government system works, especially for state government. And just learning about that experience, I had never really, uh, quite understood, uh, how exactly the, the state systems work. And it's, you know, really similar to our national system, but it was really cool to kind of immerse yourself in that environment. And, uh, really, really glad I had that opportunity. Uh, we had our elections on Wednesday, uh, so I had the opportunity to be a state senator, uh, which was incredible. We got to pass actual legislation for things that we wanted to see for Alabama, uh, and that was a really neat experience as well. Um, I did run for governor, I got the, uh, I guess nomination for, uh, the nationalist party, and that was really cool. I got to learn all about our, you know, different things that are going on in our state, how to do a little bit of background research and, uh, kind of see what was going on. Uh, so that way I could, you know, debate the, uh, the other nomination, uh, nominee appointee. Uh, and that was, that was very cool. Uh, and then on Friday, we actually had the opportunity to go to Montgomery and experience the, you know, kind of be there in, in the, in the present and, and kind of experience, uh, the actual counterparts. So the people who were elected to their positions got to actually meet their counterpart in, uh, in Montgomery. So the governor got to meet K I V herself, which was quite, it was very cool. And she actually spoke to us as well, was two black vehicles pulled up, and there she was, came out and spoke to the entire boys state. So very, very cool experience. Um, I'm so glad that I learned all that I did over, uh, over those, that, that one week and made a lot of great friends. That's, that's definitely, if you ask any one of those, those people, they'll tell you they made some definitely lifelong friends, uh, on that, on that experience. So, so grateful for the opportunity and really hope that though, that Madison City will continue to, uh, encourage others to go in the future.
Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
You're one of my favorite people. You're just awesome. I, I can't wait to see what the Lord has planned for you.
Your sake.
Uh, that is.
Actually, he lives in District Five, so.
Hi, my name is Lyndy Kirby. Um, I went to girls state, and I would say the biggest thing I took away from girls state is how inspiring it was. Um, inspiring meeting so many really driven and passionate girls from high schools just like mine. High schools much bigger than mine, much smaller than mine. And also inspiring seeing all the amazing speakers that we had, many of which who were women who had been where I was. Um, women like Governor Kay Ivey and Senator Katie Britt. They were all women who had been to girls state and gone on to do such amazing and, like, life-changing things. And, um, I mean, we learned, we learned a lot together. I would say one of the biggest things was the relationships that we built. We learned all about the interaction between state and local government and the importance of city meetings like this. Um, our city meetings probably felt a little more like a slumber party. But I would say the biggest thing was just learning together and coming out of it different people than we were and much stronger and more confident people. But, thank you.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Uh, sure. Oh, yeah. Awesome people. Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, me too. Probably more James Coleman for me.
Larry, we really appreciate you guys doing that. It continues to be something that, uh, every time we get to see these young adults come in, we're, we're just blessed to be here for where we are now because we won't be here long. So congratulations, guys.
Thank you for the presentation. Next, we have public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. Uh, anyone can sign up, and we do have one comment card. Uh, I would also like to ask you, when you approach the podium, to state your name and the district where you live. The first comment card that we have turned in is from Bernadette Mayer.
Good evening, all. Um, I'm Bernadette Mayer. I live in Heatherwood subdivision in District Five. Okay, my first comment is one I repeat every week, every time I get, and it's to, for more public comments, set us some time to have it be restored to five minutes. I've explained it before, and, um, um, my wish continues. Okay, number two, um, I do believe we're going to have more discussion on the Trident Security. I see there people here with resolution two zero twenty-three dash three twenty-eight R, a two hundred thousand dollar expenditure. Number three, um, Madison Visionary Partners. I objected to how it was created, kind of what all was really going to be going on with that. And my objections kind of continue with the funding. Um, I have three things to say about it. It's either i- maybe one of these three things are all, you know, combination, um, ineffective, a flush fund or pork. Okay, number, uh, my fourth comment is the one that I would like to talk on the most. And that is, um, request, and I've talked about this before too, requesting extending sidewalk on East View. Um, and then the second thing is a traffic light on Slaughter Road at Heatherwood Maple Valley Drive, um, intersection on Slaughter Road. Um, there's a large apartment complex on the north side of Slaughter that's, um, coming to completion. It's on the Huntsville side. On the south end of Slaughter, which also is on the Huntsville side, um, north end is close to occupancy, uh, south end is going to be right behind. There's the senior area development in Madison on Slaughter Road, which is, of course, in the city of Madison. And also, there's a, um, large apartment complex, nine hundred units off Highway seventy-two, approved by Huntsville City Council to be adding more traffic along Slaughter Road as people, um, are heavily using Slaughter with the commuter traffic. Um, I found out that, um, from our, um, Steve Haraway with County Commission, that a traffic light would cost about thirty-five, forty thousand. But that traffic light cost can be split between the three entities, just like some of the other road improvements along Slaughter or, uh, um, uh, among the three entities. There's lots of parks and wreck money spent in last year's budget, including like another two hundred fifty thousand dollars tonight. And, uh, pedestrians and bikers would like to really get across Slaughter to get to the greenway. And that, uh, and that would benefit us. Drivers have a hard time turning left and right, uh, onto Slaughter from both, um, Creekwood, which is Huntsville's, and Heatherwood, which is Madison's. And, uh, you know, Steve Haraway says, well, based, traffic lights based on accidents and stuff. I don't want any accidents or death. I, I think you guys are, are really all about safety, so that's important. And thank you.
Um, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Please come forward, state your name and district.
Jennifer Coe, Ashley Estates, District Five, council president. I would like to talk to you tonight about agenda item under Mayor Paul Finley, resolution number two zero twenty-three, three twenty-eight R, authorizing agreement with Trident Security Solutions, LLC for City Hall security guard services in the amount not to exceed two hundred thousand. Uh, the agenda packet does not contain the contract. We can't pass a resolution that doesn't know what's in it. This isn't U.S. Congress passing the Affordable Care Act. We need to see it before we sign it. We need to be able to read it first. Um, so the second issue I have tonight is the fire station in Town Madison. I'm glad we got this worked out. It's good for intergraph and proved properties too. But I do remember that at a certain city council meeting back in November of two zero twenty-one, the developer of Town Madison promised to donate the land for this fire station. And, um, this narrative was pretty dominant throughout the past couple of years. Mr. Cece says he was working with the city to defray the cost of it. That's what it, he said in the video, because, um, Council President Bartlet, you had brought it up about the, um, the fire station, and we needed a fire station for there. Okay, so planner, broker makes excuses and says that the fire chief didn't ask for it, which I don't entirely, no, I don't believe that. But the developer, um, is the developer going to make any good faith effort to defray the cost of this? Um, lastly, when did we decide to donate more taxpayer dollars for M V P? Was it, uh, what is it designated for? Because it looks like, um, we raised it again, five thousand more than last year. And can, instead, can we spend some of that money on road improvements? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. Anyone else who would like to address the council?
Margie Daly, Karen's district. First, I want to talk about the new proposal for the animal shelter. I think it's a, a very big step in the right direction. However, the canines deserve better than a lean-to with a wooden fence. They deserve a little grass, and I would hope that we can do that, put a little grass back there. Now, I know in other states, the canine handlers take the dogs home as long as the home has been approved. Maybe we could look at that option. Resolution, uh, three twenty-eight, Trident Security. The attachment, the contract was not in the packet, the public did not get to view it. It should Floyd, that received George, George Floyd funds. They received $20,000 that was donated to the city from McDabb, just turned over to them. Thirty thousand from Representative Mike Ball, also donated to the city, turned over to M V P. Then there was, I think, twenty thousand, that I recall, from Senator Butler, also donated to the city, but given to M V P. So with all those donations coming from the city, why do we need to funnel another fifty-five thousand to them? You know, yet we can't take of, care of the dogs in Madison City, the rescued dogs are lost and abandoned. Uh, you know, fifteen thousand to Marf doesn't even pay the vet bills. M V P is simply a funneling money scheme. It's a nonprofit with little to no oversight, boosted by the city, state, and federal tax dollars, and it was started in City Hall. The one house has been left to rot. Uh, that, that's awful. Uh, I, I just can't believe that's what we're supposed to be putting in tomorrow. Again, I'm going to mention the streetlights that were changed, to these lights that are insufficient and cause unsafe areas in the older parts of the neighborhood. Uh, we have streets that haven't been paved in thirty-plus years. Yet, you know, this is what we're doing with the money. We need to have those streetlights so that we can see the street, so that people driving don't hit pedestrians and bicycles. I mean, how hard is that? Walton Drive and Walton Road, they have two streetlights. You can't even drive down there. You can't see anything. There's blind spots. We got people running into lakes because the lights aren't there on used road. I mean, eh, eh, we had a consultant, we paid millions. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council? Please come forward, state your name and district. Seeing none, we will close public comments and move to the consent, agenda, and finance committee report. And, uh, Greg, you want to do one last, uh, finance committee report, or just Connie about it?
Okay, if you'd like so. So, um, the finance committee has reviewed and approved the attached, um, expenses for the last month. I want to make note of the fact that there was thirty-dollar donation to the senior center. And, um, I would like to move to approve these expenses.
Okay, motion second by Powell. Any discussion? Ready for a vote. Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Next presentation and report, starting with Mayor Finley.
All right, and I will start with asking for council approval on Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash three twenty-eight dash R with an authorization of the agreement with Trident Security Solutions for City Hall, uh, services, uh, security services not to exceed $200,000 for a one-year term.
Move to approve. Second. Okay, motion and second. Um, do you want to have any comment on the, why?
Yeah, so council has seen contract. Um, part of the reason we don't have the contract in the package is it is security at City Hall. Part of what we're trying to accomplish is to keep City Hall safe, so we don't want to necessarily share everything that's in there that in turn will keep City Hall safe. So, um, again, one of the things that we've had asked, uh, many times by our folks here at City Hall is to shore up the safety within this building. And I appreciate council's willingness to look at this. Uh, Megan has done a great job, um, in H R of, uh, getting all this information. It is the same group that works at the library, who we've had a lot of success with, and, uh, it's something that is in Gerald's budget, but we would like to get in, implemented as quickly as we can.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, ready for a vote. Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes.
All right, and the only other thing I have is Bob Jones Parade is Thursday. What's the time it starts? Do you even know? Five-thirty?
I think so.
Chief? Four-thirty, five-thirty? Be ready by four-thirty. Going up Hughes Road. Um, always something exciting for our community. I just still think it's one of the neatest things we do, is both of our high schools still have parades up the main streets. Um, our public works team does a great job of setting up the barriers. Police and everybody else monitors those fires involved with it. Um, so thank you guys for everything we do. That's all I have.
Okay, District One?
Uh, yes, I just have a couple of items. Um, I'm wearing the Madison Fire and Rescue shirt for October. Uh, it is available at Station Three. If you'd like to support, um, breast cancer awareness, this is an annual event that they do. It's available in long sleeve, short sleeve, navy blue or pink. Short sleeve is only ten dollars. Long sleeve is only fifteen dollars. It's a great deal, and that money goes to support, um, breast cancer awareness in Madison County. The other item I'd like to mention is Councilmember Spears and I were fortunate to attend the Tie the Ribbons, uh, celebration with Hudson Alpha. We were blessed to hear Dr. Mary Claire King speak. Um, first time I've ever been in a room with somebody who has saved literally millions of lives. She and her team discovered the BRCA gene. Uh, the BRCA gene has been instrumental in about, in, um, fighting against eleven different types of cancer, mainly breast cancer awareness, but, um, it was just inspiring. I think, um, Connie will agree with me, to hear her speak, um, about the advances they've made, and they raised over $200,000 in support. And it was just a tremendous honor to hear her speak. Um, very inspiring, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Initials?
Yes, I wanted to add, um, to what Mara said about the Tie the Ribbons luncheon. Um, we are very fortunate in this area that, um, the screening for these cancers, the genetic screening for these cancers is free to a certain, and I have written down ages, and I left a piece of paper at home.
Twenty-eight to thirty.
Twenty-eight to thirty-year-olds that are in Madison County, Limestone County, Marshall County, can do, get this screening for free if you go to the Hudson Alpha website. If you live in this area and you're not, but you're between twenty-eight and thirty, you can get this at a reduced rate. You go to the Hudson Alpha website and you, you put in your information, and then it will tell you how much it would cost you to have this screening done. Now, they do have you coordinate with your physician so that you will have somebody to support you when you get this information. But if you are interested, if you have any family members who have colon cancer, breast cancer, ovarian cancer, any of the ru- the major cancers, not that any cancers minor, that's not what I'm saying. But this is a great opportunity, not only for Hudson Alpha to gather more data to help improve their, their, um, research, but it also gives you the information to make wise decisions about your own health. And my grandmother had colon cancer, and so this is something that is very important to me. And so, and we all, there are several of us whose families have been touched by cancer. And so I just wanted to share that information. If you can't find it, let me know. I'll help you find it on the website. That's all I have.
Okay, District Three?
Mine isn't nearly as important as that, as that, but worth, worth noting. Um, there's a, I guess a Halloween downtown. I know we usually do it over at the, in Sandy Skate Park, but I think...
Moving downtown.
Moving downtown. I think downtown owner just stepped up and, I don't know the dates, maybe you...
I don't have them in front of me, but I will, uh, we'll make sure we get it back out on the website tomorrow. Corey, you know what time, when, what date? Thirty-first at five-thirty, downtown Madison.
Halloween.
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 Okay.
Well, we don't always do Halloween.
I understand.
But we do always do Christmas on Christmas.
There you go.
And that's it?
That's all I got, yeah.
Okay, District Four?
No new business.
And District Seven?
Uh, one thing I was going to say is, uh, thank Parks and Rec. I know basketball's getting ready to start up, and I know they do the yeoman's work every year, trying to coordinate with schools and different facilities to make sure that, uh, we've got enough court space and all of those deconflicted. So, Corey, thanks to junior staff for getting all that worked out, and, um, look forward to a good season.
And thank you to Dr. Nichols. I know we had a couple of, of, uh, junior high and, or junior high, middle schools and high schools that, um, we needed a little bit more court space for. He stepped in and I, we now have, I think, that information, so.
Okay, great. Um, I have Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash three seventy-one dash R, authorizing video recording and archiving of our council work session on October eighteenth. Move to approve. Second. Okay, motion second, any discussion? Ready for a vote.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. I have just a couple of announcements. One is that the, uh, Police Citizens Advisory Committee is meeting tomorrow, October twenty-fourth at six P M. at Madison Library, and they're going to have a presentation by Asha Karan. And so we'd like to encourage, uh, people to come and attend that meeting tomorrow night. And, uh, second announcement, speaking of downtown, Teddy Lemon and Lavender opened up their new location. It is fantastic, and so I'd like to encourage everyone to support Lemon and Lavender and see their new location. And that's it. We do not have any board and committee appointments, so we will move to public hearings. And we have Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash two seventy-seven dash R up for hearing.
Yes, this is to vacate approximately 1.51 acres of unimproved right-of-way on Griggs and, well, what would be the extension of Griggs Road and Concord Drive. You can see it there, um, hashed out. Um, this is located east of Hughes Road, um, just, um, near Thomas Drive. So if you know where the fire station is, go down Thomas Drive and you would come into Griggs and Concord. Uh, the city, um, has had this right-of-way since the sixties, um, in large part. Um, it, it initially was dedicated when it was in our incorporated Madison County, most of it. Um, it has been unimproved. We've consulted with all of the utilities and gone through the process. Um, we don't have any intention of improving it. We don't need it. It is rather, um, rocky and steep. The, uh, property owners for this, this, these three properties here have been, this, this property right here has all been acquired by one entity, um, a family, and they plan on building a home there. And so they're the ones who are requesting to, um, vacate the right-of-way. Uh, the other property that, um, touches this right-of-way is also in agreement, uh, with this request. Happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Okay, and do, are the property owners here?
I do not believe the surveyor is here who is representing them, no.
Okay, all right. So we'll open public hearings. Is there anyone who would like to address the public hearing that have five minutes to speak on this topic?
Margie Daly, Karen's District. Well, why would you take it down? Can I see it?
Because of the clock.
I'm not going to spend five minutes up here, but I need to see it to, I guess you're going to not yield my time.
They're bringing it up. There you go.
Okay, well, it looks like it's at least eleven acres that we're talking about surrounding it, and I'm a little confused that she said they're going to build a house, but it's, it's eleven acres around it. Uh, you know, I mean, do we have it in writing that it's going to be a house, one house? And the other thing is, you know, we keep flooding the neighbors by removing these R O Ws. So, you know, with the, uh, the drainage, which we know they flooded the historic cemetery over here, all the way down portal behind on the easement of the homes, between the homes and the railroad tracks. Have we done any kind of a study to make sure eliminating this R O W will not flood the current neighbors over there in any way, shape, or form? Because usually that's what these were for, you know, drainage water. So when we remove them, we flood the other neighbors out, and this has happened consistently the last two or three years with the flooding of other homes and businesses. So, basically, those are my only questions. Will we get it in writing and that it'll only be one home? Or is there a chance that this could be one of these shanty towns like behind City Hall? Thank you.
Okay, anyone else like to address this topic during the public hearing? Seeing none, we will close public hearing and ask Mary Beth to come back and answer any questions that council may have, or the questions that were directed during the public hearing regarding one home and flood.
So, uh, first of all, the right-of-way is, uh, was donated for the extension of a street, not for drainage purposes. Um, normally, there are utility and drainage easements that run parallel to a road, but when property is developed, there's a separate detention area on the, the given property. The roads aren't designed to accommodate that. With respect to, um, the three properties, um, that I indicated were owned by the same entity, they total twelve point three acres. And then the other property that's at the northwest corner is two point two acres. Um, the, the folks who bought the three lots, um, came in and met with us personally and indicated that that is what they were going to do, is build a family home. We have no reason to doubt their word. Um, they've been consistent all along. Um, their surveyor has said the same thing. Um, so that is our understanding. Um, the property is zoned R one A, which only does allow for single-family homes. So, uh, our four development, which is adjacent to City Hall, is not something that's allowed there.
Any questions from council? Okay, all right, we have a motion.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion second. Ready for a vote. Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council... Say it again?
I said aye.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you, Mary Beth. Thank you. Okay, moving on to department reports, beginning with engineering.
Mr. Johnson's out of town this evening. He had two contracts that I, I think I can answer questions for the council. First one, uh, for your considerations, Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash three four four R. This is asking, uh, for authorizing the renewal of an agreement for street sweeping services with Sweep America. This would be sixty-seven thousand, four hundred, twenty-four and four cents to be paid from the stormwater fund. Move to approve.
Second. Motion second, any questions for Brian? Okay, seeing none, ready for a vote.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mary Beth. Thank you. Okay, moving on to department reports, beginning with engineering.
Mr. Johnson's out of town this evening. He had two contracts that I, I think I can answer questions for the council. First one, uh, for your considerations, Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash three four four R. This is asking, uh, for authorizing the renewal of an agreement for street sweeping services with Sweep America. This would be sixty-seven thousand, four hundred, twenty-four and four cents to be paid from the stormwater fund. Move to approve.
Second. Motion second, any questions for Brian? Okay, seeing none, ready for a vote.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have, uh, Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash three fifty-two R, uh, authorizing an amendment to the professional services agreement with Barge Design Solutions for Construction Engineering and Inspection Services for Project nineteen dash zero four seven. This is on Waltrane Highway from Graphics Drive to I five sixty-five. Uh, it's in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars to be paid from Engineering's department budget.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second, any questions? Ready for a vote. Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlett?
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Brian. Next, planning.
You have Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash two seventy-two dash R, and this is asking for you to approve an amendment to an existing development agreement that is between the city of Madison and now Lennar Homes, related to the Bradford Station project. You can see on the screen that the project is outlined in red. This project was approved back in twenty nineteen. Uh, the development agreement, um, required the developer to perform a certain number of, uh, infrastructure obligations over a five-year period. At the time the development agreement was approved, it was with Sabreland Company. They've since sold the property to Lennar Homes, so this amendment is with Lennar Homes who inherited the development Uh, on the screen, you can see the green dash line that, uh, shows where the greenway is gonna be built. And then this extension of Westchester, which is highlighted in yellow. So the development agreement requires the developer to get approval from, uh, the railroad and to construct, um, this segment of the greenway prior to proceeding with their Phase Three plan. The Westchester is not required to be completed until Phase Four goes forward. So we're asking to swap those. They've had preliminary feedback from the railroad that's not favorable. We'd like to build in some more time to see if we can work anything out, and so that's what this request is for.
Move to approve? Second.
Okay, motion second. Any questions?
I just wanted to clarify something. They're still, in this agreement, they're still going to be doing what they were going to do before. They're just, the timing has swapped.
So one of the requirements, um, that they have to complete is to construct the greenway, which goes from Sullivan all the way through the project and then up to Bradford Creek. So again, from Sullivan all the way here, um, so that is a requirement. Because, and they're required to have the greenway plans completed before we will, um, sign off the plat for Phase Three to go forward. The greenway plans are in, are near complete. We've been going back and forth with comments and they're two comments away from being finalized, but for the railroad piece. The development agreement states that if the railroad says it's technically infeasible to put the, the trail underneath the railroad, then the developer is off the hook because obviously we can't hold them for something that the railroad won't allow. So right now, the developers in compliance, they're doing everything that they need to do. There is a possibility that Norfolk Southern will not get to a yes for this component. Um, again, we're trying to buy an additional year effectively to try and figure something out. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it says yes, they're doing, they're still doing the same thing, we're just changing the timing.
They are, but it's a possibility that we won't get that segment.
Possibility, but...
But they're gonna handle what they can take care of earlier, which I think, again, that's a...
Correct.
That's a big help to us, especially from our transportation standpoint, from our buses.
Mm-hmm.
And then it gives us more time working with them, also working with the railroad, to try to find some solution to getting underneath that, um, underpass, like the, uh, the train tracks, which, as you can imagine, with all that's happened worldwide with trains, um, it's, it, this is a win-win for everybody right now, taking care of what you know you can take care of and then giving more time to work on this.
Is it possible that it could be an overpass instead of under? Would that be more, less expensive and more feasible?
Much more expensive.
Really?
Um, but the railroad has mentioned that.
Okay, yes.
And, uh, the feasibility of that would be challenging in part because of grade differential on either side of the railroad. So we've actually, you know, very preliminarily talked about maybe that crossing needs to be at a different location and not at this point. Um, so one possibility would be to try to build a bridge across the creek on the project side of the tracks and look to extend the greenway out west that way. Um, again, we need some time to kind of work on this and figure it out. Um, the developer, you know, both Breland Companies, when they owned the property and now Lennar, have met the development agreement obligations. Um, and, and as the mayor indicated, this is a, um, a good solution to allow us to get some more time while getting an infrastructure piece that's very important for the project done sooner. Um, I would add that once the Westchester connection is, um, completed, um, this also will help the adjacent properties that are zoned industrial on either side of that, in, um, Westchester Extension be able to be developed.
And I can't, I mean, I can't emphasize how difficult it is to work with the railroad. I mean, we, we can't even get them to not stop a train, you know, to, to...
For hours.
For hours. Um, as a matter of fact, at, at Street Fest, I was stuck on one side of the tracks for literally an hour and a half because there was a train there. So, you know, I can't imagine what it'd be like as, as, as a developer. I mean, we're, we're a city, so anyway, that's, that's just my two cents.
One of the differences in the original agreement and this amendment is that the improvement that would benefit the city would have been made before Phase Three would move forward, where this amendment has during the infrastructure construction of Phase Three.
Yes.
So what, what are you contemplating as the timeline of during construction?
So this would be done as part of the infrastructure with the third phase. Uh, there's a preliminary plat that's been approved by Planning Commission, just hasn't been signed pending this amendment. So during the preliminary plat phase is when a developer will build out the roads, do the, uh, drainage and so forth. They complete all of the infrastructure for the project, then they get a final plat approved by the Pla, the Planning Commission. If there are any infrastructure items that are not improved, uh, completed, then they have to bond for them. But we generally don't allow them to bond for very much. It might be a handful of trees or something like that. So what we envision is that this road would be completed before they can build any homes in Phase Three because they would do their infrastructure, then they get their final plat, then they're allowed to sell the lots and build the homes. So the timeline, um, depending on weather, um, I would say by early summer. Um, and Mr. Cece is here, he might have a better idea on the timing of that. But it can take a bit of time, especially coming into the winter months, to put in all the roads and curb and gutter and all of that.
Okay.
That they would, so our vision is they're not gonna be able to sell any units in Phase Three before this road is done.
Okay.
Which is why we, we timed it to the infrastructure completion of Phase Three. As opposed to Phase Three itself, which would be the infrastructure and all the homes.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, ready for a vote? Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
The next item is proposed, uh, ordinance number twenty-two-three dash three one three. And this is to adopt the new legal descriptions, uh, for the redistricting effort that the council's been involved with, uh, for several months now. You had your first reading at the last meeting. There have been no changes since, uh, first reading.
Okay. Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. Motion second by Seifert. All right, any discussion? Any questions? Okay, ready for a vote? Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Do we need to, Renee, do we need to make a comment though, like, Paul, you sent out an email, I mean, clarified. Are you, are you gonna do it?
So basically, to, to verify, these districts, then we will remain, um, you guys will continue to represent your current district until the first week in November, whatever date that is, in twenty-twenty-five, when the new council takes over. And at that point, they will take over with the districts that you just approved. So the current districts stay in place through twenty-twenty-five.
So just to double check on that, so that means that when we vote in August, we're still voting for our current areas or that area? I thought we were voting for that area.
Yes, we would vote.
The new council.
New council.
Whoever runs for council in, in August of twenty-twenty-five is running for those districts.
Okay, okay.
You guys will manage your current districts through somebody taking over, whoever, which seven people, um, win in the first week, uh, the first Monday in November.
Right, to qualify to run, you would have to reside in the newly drawn.
In the newly drawn district.
For the, yes.
Okay. Recreation.
Good evening. My first item is resolution twenty-two-three, three forty-six dash R, authorizing an agreement for the installation of a cricket field. Um, I had a group come to me wanting space for cricket. Unfortunately, all our field dimensions do not meet the specifications for the sport of cricket. Um, we found a space at Palmer Park that's kind of open. It's not technically a field. But, um, these folks said that will work if they can install what they call the pitch, which is where the wickets are. I don't know if you've ever...
Mm-hmm.
They, they throw the ball kind of like baseball at these wickets and, and that, they need like seventy feet behind them because that would be a foul ball and baseball is playable on this. So anyway, long story short, we found them a space. They're gonna install this, uh, it's like an anaster turf area for their pitch and, uh, worked it out with legal to dot the i's and cross the t's. And these guys are a really good group of guys and I'm glad we were able to find something for them.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, motion second. Any questions?
So my only question, just to confirm, we're not losing Field Seven, right?
No.
It said, I was thinking it said in the agenda packet that it was gonna be at Field Seven, but it's just next to Field Seven.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, it'll be the front area of Palmer for those of you that were here ten years ago where the...
Right, okay.
Trailer used to sit.
Yes, yes.
Sure ride when you come in.
That area to the right. Um, the one caveat I had was if plans change for the park, they understand that they need to take that up if, if that's, if we change our plans for the park in the future.
Very good.
Okay, any other questions? Ready for a vote? Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? And the motion passes. Next.
The second item is resolution twenty-two-three, three forty-eight dash R, for bid for Project twenty-three oh nine I T V. Um, this is for the fencing at the Hexagon facility for the two softball fields that are out there. Um, the current fence is not in good condition and, uh, we, we wouldn't feel comfortable from a safety aspect to allow people to play on that on a regular basis. Um, the, the number we got on this is actually a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars cheaper than the second closest bid, so.
Move to approve?
Second. Okay, motion Shaw, second. Spears. Okay, questions for Corey? All right, ready for a vote? Councilmember Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine? Councilmember Seifert?
Aye.
And the motion passes. Thank you, Corey. Any miscellaneous announcements?
Only miscellaneous I would say is the pickleball courts at Hexagon are done and we will be setting up a ribbon cutting either this week, at the end of this week, or the beginning of next week. We'll try to work with everybody on their schedules.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other announcements, we are adjourned.
To take your revenue and put it towards something to make a difference. So we're gonna continue to focus, hopefully, and focus on all of them. First and foremost, we're gonna keep you safe. Madison Police, Madison Fire, they do an incredible job. We're gonna continue to make sure they're funded and they're in the shape of they need to be. We're gonna continue to work to keep you healthy. Madison Hospital and a lot of the other posters, uh, Ed Prescott's office, things that are in place right now where you need it closer to your home, we're gonna continue to focus on that. I'm never gonna forget that we need to be moving traffic. We need more lanes. We need better throughput. We need more roundabouts. We have figured out how to use them. Good for you guys and us. We're gonna continue to work on that. We're gonna add connectivity and green space. A lot of what you saw transitions into something for families to do together, to be safe on greenways and have connectivity with sidewalks, and we're not gonna stop that. You saw the quality businesses that continue to come to this area, break ground and then cut ribbons. And we will continue to focus on that. Quality businesses bring revenue, but it also makes your life easier on being able to do it right here in the city of Madison. And probably as important as anything, we must take care as best we can of our current employees and then recruit everyone we can to come and help continue as we grow.